Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Breeden?
Here.
Ms. Bruce?
Here.
And Chairman Wadsworth?
Here. Next item on the agenda is review and adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the next item is review and approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any comments or questions on the minutes as presented? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the next item is the public comment period. If anyone wishes to speak, you have three minutes to speak. If you're in the audience, you're asked to come forward. If you're on Zoom or telephone, please let it be known that you wish to speak, and you will have three minutes to speak, or if you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes. Do we have anyone on Zoom? Okay. Now that I'm hearing anyone wish to speak, I will close the public comment period. And the next item of business is, our next item is old business. And the first item on that is item 6A, review and discussion of stakeholder groups and minutes. All of you have received a copy of the comments from Rebecca Cobb that I, response to a questionnaire I sent out to her. Has everyone had a chance to read that? Alright, first, first question I had is, what is the optimum size for each group? Rebecca Cobb responded that 10 is the maximum size for each group. Excuse me. As they will want, as they will want to have intimate discussion with the stakeholders, she advised that it's okay if all stakeholders are not able to attend. She said by 10 or less, they can have a much more intimate discussion with the groups. Anybody got any questions about that? If not, the second question I had was should group members be involved or interested in the group, in the group subject, i.e. should the development group, made up of developers, contractors, surveyors, realtors, et cetera, be made up of individuals involved in those professions? Or should the group include a cross-section of citizens with an interest in or subject to impact by the ordinances for development? Her response was the group should be made up of the professionals for each category represented, such as licensed surveyors, realtors, builders, and so forth. And of course, farmers, or our profession. And the third question was, should there be a separate group made up of interested and involved citizens? And her response was, no separate group for citizens. The plan is to have workshops with citizens at two locations on the evening of January 26, 2021, and on January 28, meetings with stakeholder groups during the day, and additional workshops with citizens in the evening. And the next question was, will the same questions be utilized for each group? Or should questions be related to each group's interest? The same, her response was the same questions will be used for each group, and they will send questions to those who have been selected and agreed to serve on the groups prior to the stakeholder group meetings. And the next question I had was, what is the Berkeley Group methodology for applying stakeholder groups' responses to ordinance revisions? The Berkeley Group will gather all information from the stakeholder in workshops and provide the information to the planning commission and board supervisors with their recommendations for our meetings in February. The PC and board will use that information to facilitate final changes for the public hearings in August and September. I must admit, I've had no, I was somewhat confused about how they would handle these stakeholder groups, and this helped, really helped to clear that up. And it kind of sets the tone for what we need to do this evening. And that is to determine stakeholder groups. We will eliminate what I had recommended previously, recommended a separate group for citizens. So that would, we'll take that out, so that leaves us three groups. So what we need to do is determine how we want to break that up into four groups. And then we want to determine, by eliminating all the private citizens, everyone, except actual stakeholders in the professions we're representing, we want to select 10, and she said, she recommended we don't select any more than 10. We might want to set aside a couple for each group in case we don't have, in case some don't, don't agree to serve. But Rebecca said that that doesn't really make any difference, because if that cuts down to six or seven, it's not gonna, not gonna be a problem with them, the way they conduct the groups. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
So in the September 18 email from the Berkeley Group, they had suggested four groups. And we're going with all the recommendations in your, in their response to your document today, which I'm fine with. Why would we go with the four groups they recommended initially on their September 18?
I have no problem with going with four groups they recommended, and we need to talk about exactly what profession or what group, what who would be represented in each of those four groups.
Well, who perhaps, but in terms of which ones. So we are going with the four they recommended. Farmers, major landowners is the first one. Tourism and economic development, the second one. Real estate bankers, attorneys, the third one. And surveys, engineers, and contractors, the fourth one. So that those are the four groups that they'll be having stakeholder meetings with. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Again, let's, let's look at each of those groups. First group is larger, farmers and major landowners. And that, pretty well, with that group, it pretty well speaks for itself. There, you know, we got big farms, lots, small farms. We got a lot of large acres, large acreage farms and properties in the county. So I think that pretty well speaks for itself. The second group, tourism, economic development, I don't have, right? John, I don't have, right in front of me, what the second group they had was, what was?
Yeah, tourism, economic development is the second one.
Okay.
And then real estate bankers, attorneys was the third one. And then surveys, engineers, and contractors was the fourth one.
Okay. I had put tourism, economic development, and large business industry. Actually, tourism, economic development. And one of the things that I was thinking is, small business owners that are... Actually, what I was really thinking about was, was the Bed and Breakfast, like Seven Springs and some of those places, at least have some representation.
And I'd mentioned Seven Springs and some of the others as possible tourism ones. So they were included in my list as well. I had three or four of them.
We will talk about all the lists.
Mr. Chairman, so what I'm confused about, so we've made a number of recommendations to folks. And it would seem to me that the Berkeley Group, with assistance from staff and me, the county administrator, would be the ones who would actually decide who are best in those groups. I'm not sure. I'm not comfortable with us choosing who goes in those groups. And I may, I may stand alone in my opinion, but I've got some concerns, so.
I think it's our responsibility to choose those groups. And once we choose them, I will send them to Mr. Bassinari for discussion with the board supervisors.
If I may, I will be voting against any list that excludes any people on those lists. So just to let you know in advance, I will not be voting for any list. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to chime in on the two. That's not what we're supposed to be doing. And why is Berkeley Group not here tonight?
The Berkeley Group was not scheduled to come to this meeting. I don't see any, any reason we should, we would have had the Berkeley Group here.
Because we need them to answer some of these questions, that's why.
I have talked with Rebecca Cobb today to clear up.
Those questions were your questions. They weren't questions from the board.
Those questions were my questions to clear up the issues.
That they weren't the board's issues, that's what I'm saying. I'm not gonna vote for it either.
When you're talking, when you say the board, are you talking about this planning commission?
Yes, this planning commission.
No, they were not, but those were questions that were pertinent to the subject.
It doesn't matter, they didn't come from this board. If you're gonna tell Berkeley Group a matter of position on something that this board wants to know, you have to have a consensus of everyone on this board. And like I said, the list we're supposed to come up with from Berkeley Group is from a list from everyone, that all of them get turned into Berkeley Group. They decide, we do not decide. We're not the governing body that decides which ones we pick for each one of these groups.
I just have a question, and I respect and understand it would be helpful to have Berkeley Group here. I don't understand how the Berkeley Group would be able to make these determinations when they don't know the folks.
The same way they did before. They did it randomly.
That is, that is exactly what the Berkeley Group asked us to do.
That's not what they did in other committees.
Was to determine who would be on these groups. And they asked for our recommendations on the groups.
No.
And they asked for our recommendations on who would serve on those groups.
They asked for a list, not for us to choose. But like I said, you can go ahead, but I'm not gonna vote for a list either. Everybody gets all the list or none of the list.
We will not have all the numbers on those lists.
You have to take a vote on it. If the board decides that, that's what we will do. If I have to go to the other board and overrule you, I will.
Mr. Greenwood, you are a member of this committee.
I just said that. This committee has to decide it. This committee decides to take the, all the list, this committee will take all the list. You can't decide.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, my understanding originally was they would do advertising, they would do outreach, and, and the question was either asked by them or us, would it be worthwhile for supervisors and commissioners to make recommendations? Because we know the community, and, and we've done that. And, and so I'm not really sure why we would limit the list that they get. Again, staff works with these people, and staff may be able to weigh in as to which ones would be best. It's also possible that some of the people on the list will be unable to serve. In which case, if we've limited it to 10 for each, and then half of them can't serve, we're further out. I'm not sure why we want, we want to exclude any voices. Frankly, I'm interested in hearing from those people who don't like what we've done more than people who have, so.
Mr. Breeden and Mr. Greenwood, I'm, I'm sorry you all disagree with this process.
It's fine, I'm fine with Mr. Chairman.
I did what I did by going to Rebecca Cobb with the Berkeley Group in order to clarify exactly what they wanted for these groups. They had said in previous correspondence that we, the planning commission, and the board supervisors would determine who would be on those groups. I wanted to know what size those groups would be. I asked, that's the question I asked. She said 10 maximum. So that's all we expect to have on any of those groups, is 10 maximum, period.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
The Berkeley Group, their, their methodology is to discuss with the 10 stakeholders and get the feeling of those stakeholders, of how, what, any questions or any concerns they have with the ordinances that we have developed. Once they have that, then they will take that information to these workshops and discuss it in those workshops. After they have done the stakeholder groups in the workshops, and Sherry correct me if... If you have any comment, please. But once they have discussed this with the stakeholder groups in the workshops, they will make a recommendation to us and the board of supervisors. And then it will be up to the board of supervisors and the planning commission to determine how we want to proceed, what changes we might want to make based on those discussions.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I, I, I'm grateful that you went to them for the questions and got the clarification. However, I, I feel too, that our lists, if we have identified what group that they might be considered for, then it would be best just to provide those lists to the Berkeley Group for those to reach out to the people. In looking, glancing over the different lists, there might be 15 for any one category, but that would be the most. And I doubt that, at this time of the year, that all of the people that might be on the list of 15 would be able to participate. So I feel like that it might be narrowed down to 10 before it's all over with, and we would not exceed the recommendation of how many to, that could participate in those smaller groups.
I think when you add up, when you put all, all the recommendations we have together, and I appreciate everybody taking the time to, to put those recommendations together. But I, I think it is quite obvious that we can't have the larger groups. What, what we can do is pare those groups down to what we think is reasonable. And we can send those recommendations to the board of supervisors along with all of the other names. And then if the board supervisor wants to make additional changes, that would be up to the board of supervisors. But I am not in favor of sending the Berkeley Group a list of people that they don't know, have never met, don't know, don't know anything about.
So I just wanna, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna ask the question, because we clearly have differences of opinions in terms of what our understanding of the process is. Because I also thought that it was the planning commission's responsibility to help develop the list and provide it to the Berkeley Group. So I'm wondering what, what happened? Where, where was it said? And where, because it seems to me there's a, there's a question that determined, that needs to be identified.
We are supposed to get a list of prospective stakeholders. This list is supposed, after we compile a list of people that you recommend, we're supposed to send that list to the Berkeley Group. They are the ones that are gonna reach out to these possible stakeholders. They will do that in January and invite the stakeholders and finalize that list. That is something that they will do. Does it go to the board of supervisors? If they take the recommended list that y'all have, and then they pare it down to the...
Yes.
They make the determination as to, you know, who's... They, they, they reach out to as many as they can. They get a max of 10 people. Not all 10 are gonna show up or participate. They said that's fine, even if they have three or four. But they're gonna reach out to a maximum number of people on each section of the list and invite them to be a stakeholder as their...
Because if that's the process, I don't, you know, and they're the professionals here in terms of the outreach, I, you know, I understand that. I just don't understand how they would be able to, any better than the planning commission or the board of supervisors, to determine the list.
They want to take, they want to take y'all's, that's what they want, your list.
I know, so we have...
Of people that you recommend.
Right. And I'm, I'm just saying, if, if I don't know everybody on the list, they certainly don't. How do they make the determination? That's just a question, it's an observation, as to, but, you know. So I was under a different understanding as well.
We'll need to compile a list from everybody. I have everybody's work, but Stevens?
I sent it to you, but like I said, you don't have a tablet, so I was gonna ask you if you could print it, but obviously you didn't have it. So it's not, it's in your email.
If I, if I may, because I, this, you know, this is an important process. So I, I know it is, it can lead to heated debate, and that's not necessarily a bad thing. But we come together in the end in terms of what, what the decision-making is and the process, and we have these professionals here. So my next question is, here we've all provided a list of individuals. I have, are, are we to provide the buckets in which those individuals go into? Because I think there's some work on the buckets into which those individuals need to go into.
At least on my list, and I think maybe the others as well, the buckets were kind of pre-assigned. As far as them not knowing the people on the list, they've got staff who've worked with all these people, who can speak probably better than we can as to the, the benefit or not of having a particular person on the stakeholder group or not. So I would think staff would have that expertise. We've given our recommendations, and then the Berkeley Group can choose in conjunction with staff, and, and I'd be fine with that process. But for us to unilaterally pick and choose, especially with the little time we have, the supervisors are meeting in a few weeks, and we're gonna be having these meetings in less than two months. The Berkeley Group, it was my understanding from the start that they would be picking the groups, and they welcomed our input. And we've provided that input, so that's my take on things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Did I understand you to say that the Berkeley Group would be the ones to contact?
Yes.
The people? It was my understanding that we would initially contact the people to see that they would serve. And then the Berkeley Group will later contact them to, to discuss the process.
I mean, if you wanted to recommend it to them, and if they were interested, but the Berkeley Group will be the ones to reach out to the possible stakeholders.
If I may, I do recall that part of it, that they were reaching out. I do recall that part of it. I just am lacking clarity, and it's, we're kind of distilling it now in terms of how these groups are formulated. I did not assign individuals that I recommended into buckets. And I think part of it was, we were still trying to figure out what those buckets were. So how does it work from this point in terms of, here we are, it's the game of December, we've got, I, from my perspective, I'd like to put my people in buckets. I think Chairman Wagner had some individuals that could have gone into different buckets that he may have thoughts about. So I'd be interested in hearing the planning commission's thoughts about and how the timing is going to work on that. I have some concerns about the timing of it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I may have the floor. So the sooner we get to staff and Berkeley Group, I think the better it's gonna be from the timing standpoint. If you have some ideas for buckets, I would let them know, and they'll have that piece. And again, for me, we, I think, have done a good job with the draft ordinance, and there's always room for improvement. At this stage of the game, I'm anxious to hear from people who are speaking, not to me, but rather to, to Berkeley Group, to share their concerns. And then the Berkeley Group compiles it for our consideration. So, so again, you know, I, I want to keep some distance from the process to give them the comfort level they ought to have to, to talk to Berkeley Group, to say, well, here's what we like, here's what we don't like. And, and the Berkeley Group will hopefully even have some ideas of, of some things. If there are things they don't like in the ordinance, the Berkeley Group may be able to say, well, here's a way to achieve what you were trying to achieve in a way that it doesn't impact the developers as much as, as, as the current draft does. So I'm anxious to get their input, very much so. But I, again, I think that we should let the process work the way it was, was initially set up. And that's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I respectfully disagree with, with you all, because I reached out to the Berkeley Group specifically to, to determine their methodology and how they wanted to deal with this. This is, we have hired the Berkeley Group to do, to run this process. And we're trying to work with the Berkeley Group to assist them in moving ahead with that process. I, I had some very, a very clear understanding with Rebecca Cobb today. Regardless of who made the list up, Stevens, those were questions that were necessary to ask. And the Berkeley Group agreed with those questions. And they were happy to be able to discuss those questions and, and get, get the...
They may have...
Give us a better understanding.
Right. They needed to be here so that we could hear that, and we could clarify some of these questions. If we're not gonna do that, I think we should make a motion to table. And I'll make the motion.
Well...
And we can do that.
Hold on, hold on, yeah, no, you can do that.
And I will do that.
Sherry has got to get this list together and get it to the Berkeley Group. Sherry has got to, between now and January 26.
She can give them the whole list.
She has got to get advertisements in the paper, and she's got to get this list out. I, I think we need to move this process ahead. If you all want to table it, then you can take it up with the board of supervisors when you all have the work session.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to see it tabled, because we haven't got a lot of time. On the document that you forwarded to us from the Berkeley Group, where did it say they wanted us to pick the, the, the people that were serving on these stake... Because I looked at it this afternoon, and I didn't see any place.
That was it. That was the conversation I had.
Okay. So, so if I may, I will make a motion, and, and we can have the second, second or not the discussion, you can, you can turn me down, but, but I'll probably be making a motion to forward all the names to staff to, to, to work, work with Berkeley Group as they see fit. And, and any other motion, I will not be supporting. So again, I would like to make a motion to forward...
Just a minute. Let's hear it from Sherry.
Okay.
If you would like, we could take the list from everybody, compile it into the groups, the four groups, email that out to everybody tomorrow. Let everybody take a look at it. If everybody has an agreement, we're gonna have some duplicates. Some of you have the same names. If it looks good, then we will forward that information onto Berkeley Group. They have to have this information before Christmas.
So are you suggesting that you forward all of the names to Berkeley?
But we would compile them in the groups from each of your lists, send them to y'all through email tomorrow, let you take a look at them, make sure that that's what you want to do with each of the names. And once we hear from y'all, we will forward it on over to the Berkeley Group.
I, I have a problem with that whole process. You know, I don't, I don't quite understand why the two members of this planning commission have chosen to...
Doesn't matter, Mr. Chairman. There's a motion on the floor, and I'll second the motion. So there's a motion, and it's been seconded, so.
We have not got, we have not got a motion.
I just seconded it.
We have not got a motion.
We have, Mr. Breeden made the motion.
He has not made a motion.
That's, that's fine. So, Mr. Chairman, continue on, please, sir.
Based on what, what Sherry, I don't agree with that, because of my conversation with Rebecca Cobb. But based on what she has offered, then I would make a motion.
Okay, so, so, so the motion would be to allow Ms. Graham to do what she just said she would do?
That would be helpful for me, so that I can put my folks into buckets. And I don't know, and this may, should we? Because what I didn't do is clarify some of the, what these individuals do, for instance, licensed survey or things like that. You know, and I'm guessing, to the extent that we can do that for the assistance of the Berkeley Group, that would be helpful as well.
And staff probably knows who the surveyors are and who are not. So once you send the list back to us, if I may, Mr. Chairman, once you send the list back to us, are you looking for us to say yea or nay? And if we say nay, how would we go forward? Or are you just gonna, as an information, let us know who ended up in the various groups?
If one of you have an issue with something on the list that you want to name in your tourism versus, let us know. We'll try to correct it before it goes to Berkeley.
Okay.
And I just want to observe that in the, and this is before the discussion points about the citizens being part of their own citizen groups. We have citizens in here as a separate group, for instance. And so you may want to reclassify your folks as well, because you have three groups as opposed to four.
Right. And so, again, I, I actually broke it down into the, the fourth, the one group that had surveyors suffered from the... fourth, the one group that had surveyors suffered from the developers. So I kind of did that already. And if I got it wrong, you can, you can correct it. So.
Okay. I see. You have the large business and the tourism supplement. Okay.
And like you said, some of the things will overlap. Some of my real estate people are, are surveyors or some of them are landowners. Some of them are contractors. There could be multiple use, but then that would, we guess we could decide if everybody doesn't like them in a certain group, we could just move them to another group.
And Ms. Rhodes, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So originally I was confused as to the citizens being a stakeholder group. And so basically the citizens can, we can let them know that they were having these meetings and everyone can know. Um, but, but they would not be included in the groups you, you sent to Berkeley group, correct?
No.
Okay.
Berkeley said, Berkeley made it very clear that they do not want separate citizens group. They want the professionals in each group to be represented in the groups. Have you, have you had a conversation with?
No, but I guess they're thinking under the public forum that they'll touch with the citizens then and get their input. One of the four public forums.
Oh, the, the stakeholder groups?
No, the, just the citizens in general.
Okay. Those, those will be the, the work groups that, yes. Well.
Okay.
So if I would may make a motion to Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we forward all the lists, Ms. Graham, she will, and we'll, we'll put people into the, the various groups. If, if we know what groups they, they should be in, you'll compile that list, you'll send it back to us and you'll forward it to the Berkeley group and answer any questions they might have. So that, that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hyde? Ah. Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Ms. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
And Chairman Wagner?
Nay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Um, Sherry, we will look forward to getting your recommendations and, uh, please let us know, um, what comment you might get from the Berkeley group. Next item on the agenda is, um, ordinance discussion. Uh, we had asked the Berkeley group to review the changes in the state code, um, in 2020, um, to determine, well, to give us our recommendations on how we might want to incorporate those changes in the code. Those changes, um, from my reading thus far can help provide additional revenue to the county and where we can take advantage of, of that additional revenue. We need to look at doing that and we do need to make those changes as soon as possible. But since we do not have that information at this point in time, we're not going to be able to move forward with that. Um, do, do you have copies of code, of the state code?
I do not. Um, I did try to look up some of the information, but I was not able to get it before the end of the afternoon. Um, I do know that they should have everything ready for our next, next packet, the changes on the solar for us to review, um, in January.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, I'm not sure what the ordinance would need to be changed. Uh, it may be the tax ordinance, uh, that would need to have changes be made to it is probably what would have to happen in order for us to, to be able to fully benefit from the changes in legislation. And again, Berkeley will tell us that or, or the county attorney or perhaps, but, but I think the tax code is probably the place where it has to be changed. I'm not sure there's anything in our ordinance or there may be a few things that need to be tweaked and, and we should get those tweakings done be- before we open the gates, so to speak. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There, but we, we will await Berkeley's recommendations on that and based on their recommendations, we will discuss that further. I do, we do need to make those, to get that ordinance finalized, um, so that we can be in a position to accept, um, permits, or accept, uh, application for permits. Uh, and the sooner we can get that done, the better. Um, based on our discussion tonight, I will hold an abeyance, but it may be necessary to call another meeting of the planning commission before the end of the year. Uh, I will keep in touch with Sherry and information from the Berkeley group, uh, to see where we go with that. Um, and the next item on the agenda, uh, by the way, I, I did send you all this memo or the paper from Virginia Mercury and that goes into some detail on the process and on, and from just general information, discussion of the, uh, state code, how that has changed and what that may offer to us. Um, unfortunately, I had asked the former planning director to give us recommendations on that, but, um, that did not happen, could not happen. So we will wait Berkeley group's recommendations. The next item on the agenda is under new businesses, draft 2021 meeting schedule, Sherry.
It should be in the packet. This is, um, for 2021. Maybe they'll take a look at it. The schedule looks good. So I guess we can vote on it.
Looks good to me. I didn't find any conflicts with any holidays or anything else when I looked through the schedule. So.
Good too.
So I, I'll make a recommendation to approve the 2021 schedule if we need to do that.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on the board and a secondhand discussion. Sherry, you have checked these against holidays and so forth, right?
Uh, Krista did. She actually typed this up for us. She did check them.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second. There's no, there's no further discussion. Uh, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
And Chairman Wagner? Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Okay. We have the staff reports. Uh, anyone have any question or comment on the staff reports?
Not on the reports themselves. I do have a couple of questions after we've gotten through the reports. I do have a couple of questions after we get through the reports.
But you, you have questions?
About the reports now.
After we go through the report. Okay. I got you. Um. Yeah. No, no comments on those reports or no questions on those reports, then the next item on the agenda is commissioner comments. Mr. Greenwood?
Yeah. Thank you everybody for coming. It's a, I guess, what the emails that went out today were supposed to say, because the new executive order changed because of COVID. That's why we were asked whether we wanted to come via Zoom or a regular meeting. In our meeting last night, we had half that showed up and half that didn't because we had to meet the requirements of only 25 people in this room. Luckily, we didn't have a lot of people in the audience today. So we weren't able to, oh, we didn't have to worry about that. But, uh, moving forward, we're thinking that it, it's going to get worse. So we're thinking that we may have to go back to full-time Zoom meetings and our meetings. So it's just something we may want to think about too, because, uh, if we can't meet in here or get, get enough people, we may have to start thinking about maybe going back to Zoom. But I just want to thank everybody for coming. Sorry, I got a little upset because like I said, uh, we were the ones that came up with Berkeley group and the administrator's the one who hired the Berkeley group. So I know with the problems we had before, what they're supposed to be doing. So excuse my heatedness. Like, uh, Ms. Rhodes said, we do get a little heated, but it doesn't, no, no rec- reflection on anybody. Uh, honor all of y'all. It's like nothing, you know, I just get a little hot. So sorry about all that. And, um, we'll all work together. Like she said, it's, we all get together. Good. We'll have different differences. Like Mr. Wagner, he didn't vote. So that, that's his difference. So that's the way it is. So thanks, everybody. And thanks to Sherry and Krista and everybody for doing all the work y'all done and Berkeley group, if they're not here too. So thanks to them for their work too. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Greenwood. Bye.
Um, thank everybody that's in attendance tonight and I thank the planning commission themselves for the work that everybody's done to try to compile these lists. We've gone so far and had the public try to input once before. I don't want to single anyone out or not include anyone. And, and that's why I felt the way I did about the compilation of the list. I do understand that the Berkeley group does not know all these people and we do probably need to get them in the buckets that they've recommended because they won't necessarily know those groups. But I do not want to see anyone left out. We've come up with people that we thought might have valuable input and that's why I want that to just go out. Berkeley, try to make the contact if the people are available. Great. If they're not, then they're not. Um, not related to comments, I wanted to remind, um, you, Mr. Chair, that last year we asked, um, the, um, Director of Community Planning if they could assist us to put together a summary of our accomplishments for the year. So I wanted to mention, you know, whether we asked them to do that again. And, um, I know we got our schedule for next year, um, but we probably also need to start looking at our bylaws. So we'll be prepared, um, for our January meeting for that as well. And that's all I had for tonight.
Thank you.
You beat me to a couple of comments I wanted to make with the, with the annual report that's in our bylaws as well as to have the bylaws for the January meeting to, as a reminder as to what they are and if we want to change them, that would be the time to do it. Um, I'd like to thank staff for the good work that they're doing. And do you have any reinforcements coming anytime soon that you can announce?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. And, and that's all. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Um, thank you, everybody for attending. Um, I agree, this is, uh, this is just about one of the most important responsibilities I think we as a planning commission have. Um, and so it would be, um, very unusual and I think probably not a good thing if there weren't some push and pull back and forth. And so, um, I have to confess, I was, um, also along the same lines as Chairman Wagner and my thoughts that we were developing the group list. Um, ultimately I want to see us get to a better place. I don't want to see the process delayed. I do think we need to respond quickly, um, to staff in terms of where those folks go. And I'm grateful for having an active planning commission, um, that cares about this process. It's evident in the discussions and the participation. And thank you, staff, uh, for all your hard work. We're grateful. That's all for me.
I thank you all for your opinions tonight. And I must say, I disagree, Stephen and John. Um, I think as chair, I had the responsibility for clarifying the issues because, uh, there was some concern, even, even myself, that, uh, we had too many people on there. Um, there was concern, whether or not we were headed in the right direction. We had not had any clarification on how these groups would be organized, how they would be, uh, basically on Berkeley group's methodology and going through this. I felt very good after talking with Rebecca. Today, I think she had some good information. I think what she told us was, in fact, what they expected from us. I'm sorry that, uh, you all have disagreements with that. And I certainly appreciate, uh, Sherry's volunteering to get this information out to us and get it to the Berkeley group. But again, uh, I would like to hear what Berkeley group's response is to, to that information because I do not believe it was the intent of the Berkeley group to make that determination from the list of who should or who should not be on the list. That was what we had been tasked to do. And that was the reason for my, um, email to you all, uh, with the comments, with the responses from Rebecca Cobb. Um, I hope we can get this all worked out quickly. Again, if it's necessary, I will call another meeting so that we can finalize this based on response from Berkeley group. But, um, in the meanwhile, we look forward to getting that list from Sherry and making our comments on that list. Uh, again, I appreciate everybody coming. I appreciate our usual crowd, uh, coming out tonight and those who may have tuned in on Zoom, uh, not aware that anybody may have did. But, um, and Stephen, as you said, uh, yes, this, this COVID is getting, getting much worse. Uh, it's gonna take a toll on all of us. I don't know how it's going to impact, uh, our, uh, Berkeley group's meetings. And I talked to Rebecca some on that today. Probably most of those meetings will have to be on Zoom. Um, we may, may have to rethink the scheduling of some of them. But, uh, we have been working on this for well over a year now. Uh, I think we need to do everything we can to see this process come to an end. Uh, it's scheduled to the end up in August or September this year, which, um, still is a long time off. Um, meanwhile, um, we will be getting into the comp plan and I have been looking forward to that for a long time. Uh, I like, uh, some others think the comp plan should have come before the, the ordinances, but, uh, we are where we are and we'll have to deal with that and, and move forward from there. Uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn. So like a.
On the paper, say aye.
Aye.